My name is Larry Wall and I'm the Superintendent Page Unified School District. Welcome. I want you to know that I'm new to YouTube, so this is my second broadcast, I believe, and we're perfecting it more and more as we go along, so that will be, uh, please, you know, feel like a first year teacher, uh, coming right out of college and getting started with this. And every time I go into virtual learning, I feel that way too. Oh, my gosh, I gotta learn all this stuff. Um, luckily, I'm pretty versed in technology, so I kinda have an idea of what's going on in relation to that, but I would like to welcome all of you. Uh, what I'd like to do for the forum is go through and give uh, an overview of where we are, uh, what's led to our decisions and recommendations, and then uh, I'll have, I have a list of questions that have been sent in from, from constituents and I appreciate that. So, uh, that will help guide the conversation. One little difference in this than what you'd be seeing before, when I switch to the PowerPoint presentation, you're going to see a URL at the top of that PowerPoint presentation. You can type that URL into your device and you can send additional questions if you choose to at that time. And this is new, so I'm not sure I'll get to those questions, but that, uh, will allow, they'll be captured and then we'll go to that frequently uh, asked question document that we want to create. So with that, I'm going to put on the audience tools so that you can see, I need to share for a sec, right there, I told you. I'm going to share my screen so that you can see the presentation that I put together to give a common understanding of everything. At the top, it says if you have a question, uh, if you type in slides.app.go and the rest of that, it'll take you to a website where you can send questions in as we go along. So, welcome again. This is Page Unified School District Superintendent Larry Wallen. Glad to be here, excited to be here. Um, didn't anticipate the COVID-19 when I applied and started working. Uh, sorry, mid venturing into the district, but now I'm here and we're dealing with all of this. So with that, I very much appreciate you being here. Everything that we're doing is basically guided by the governor's executive orders. And he is providing guidance weekly, daily in some cases. And that guidance comes in and then tells us what to do. We are expecting guidance this week again on the opening of school and what that might look like, because if you listened to the news this morning, you learn that the infection rate in Arizona is at 25%. So those executive orders give us direction in terms of what student tennis data should look like. If you're in virtual or remote or on the ground learning, what financial compliance looks like, what student achievement monitoring is gonna look like. And in person, same number of days per week as the previous year, what that is going to look like. And now remember, uh, we go 180 days, and so that may change because one of the governor's executive orders is to study that and make a recommendation at the end of August that may go to the legislature to give some variation to that. So his executive orders, when they came out, they were focused on students and teachers' safety. And they delayed of start of in-person instruction until August 17th. Now that conflicts with our schedule in that we were expected to begin school August the 4th. And so he delayed to August 17th to allow us to begin school through distance learning plans, and we are prepping for that. As a matter of fact, we met this morning to refine our distance learning plan that we will be submitting to the Department of Education. Uh, and then they'll analyze, with that, they'll analyze the need to waive the number of school days from the 180 and describe the impact of such a wave waiver, because we are paid based on the number of days school is open. Um, they, those executive orders contain reopening and closure guidance, and that also comes from uh, references to the CDC, the Center for Disease Control Prevention, from the Arizona Department of Education, which has put out quite a few documents now about the reopening of school. Um, and that is, all that reopening is based on the decision, uh, driven by the prevalence of COVID-19 in our community. And so our plan, uh, that we're proposing to the governing board is to begin remote learning and then transition back to brick and mortar when the data supports such a move. And that's what we have to watch is that data and let that guide us. Um, decisions will be made in collaboration between the governing board, the superintendent, ADE, CDC, Coquenino County Health Department, our administrators and staff, as we look forward to what that looks like. Again, everything is based on safety. Safety is our first priority. Reopening schools will have modifications based on guidance from previously, uh, those sources that I talked about, the CDC, ADE. There'll be physical distancing, which is very difficult to put together in a school when you have 25 kids, uh, to a classroom. Uh, each kid requires about 190 square feet in order to get that six-foot distancing. One of the things we know for sure is we will be requiring face coverings. Uh, we've also ordered face shields for K-2. Uh, we'll be doing temperature screenings as an entrance to our campus, as an entrance to the buses. There will be frequent disinfecting of classrooms, uh, and there'll be an expectation that we are implementing and teaching kids with a quality education. This is different now between what we did last March, what the district did last March till May. This is a focus on causing learning to take place, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go along. So reopening, closing guidance is, so the presentation, continuous learning plan, I'll talk a little bit about that. The overview of our instructional scenarios, that's our opening model, planning considerations, then I'll answer some questions. And then from this, we'll develop a frequently asked question document after this meeting based on submitted questions. So let me make it clear that we are committed to a virtual learning system. Wow, that is a whole new, whole new thing. Uh, we were just getting into mastery learning, we were just, you know, pulling out of the new SA requirements, and now we're going to virtual, and we want a virtual system that we're going to put in place to engage students. We want to create safe learning environments, obviously. We want to mitigate the risk of exposure. Mitigate the risk of exposure. That means we're prepared, if we have exposure, to move forward with certain actions. Communicate, communicate, and communicate, and we'll never communicate enough with students, families, and staff. And unfortunately, that communication right now is a little bit, little bit soft, because our website is under major revisions. Should be released sometime this week, so you'll be getting a lot more information and a lot more access to the documents that we are dealing with. And then we want to plan for challenges to social emotional health of students, to students who've been out of school since March, to students who may have lost a loved one in the process, so we'll be putting that together. We want to offer some degree of flexibility. Uh, we want support, staff training, resources, and guidance to move forward. A team of teachers, 34 teachers that we pulled together in June, uh, pre-K through 12 teachers researched, studied, and put together best practices to design what we call our continuous learning plan to reopen schools. That continuous learning plan picks best practices from the Center for Disease Control, CDC, from the Department of Health and Human Services, from the ADE, Arizona Department of Education roadmap to reopening schools. There's four documents from our insurance carrier, the Retention Trust is constantly providing us with additional and current information. Uh, state guidelines for reopening on the Navo Nation has been provided to us, and we looked at those. We also went out and researched state plans in Kansas, Iowa, Michigan, Maryland, Ohio, Virginia, as they became available. And then we also are in a listserv from a law firm called Udall Shumway, which is in the valley, which gives us a lot of more, more, provides more information about what we're looking at. So let's go into the scenarios. Here is the, the opening scenario, remote learning. That's for every student who's enrolled in Pinya, Page Unified School District, learning takes place at home. So remember I said, school was supposed to begin August 4th. We delayed that date so that we can better have our teachers be prepared to give you that rigorous and uh, exciting virtual learning environment. So teachers will report back on June 30th, as I look over to my calendar. And instead of starting school, we're gonna go into intensive staff development. Excuse me, on building that remote learning environment. School will begin in the first scenario on August the 10th, but that will be virtual learning, so August 10th. Students will be expected to log into their Google Classroom and participate in instruction. Uh, we'll be providing meals for students that day, we'll be, uh, having designated sites in, at the school site. And then we'll also be running buses to deliver meals for breakfast and lunch. Pre-K through 12, uh, will be going all week, and we will providing every student who needs it, a Chromebook and iPad. And I say who needs it, because if you already have your own Chromebook or your own iPad, then obviously you may not want the one that we're gonna give you. Uh, student progress, and this is very different than what took place from last March to, uh, May. Student progress is supported, and there will be feedback, and there will be grades. Uh, there'll be virtual interaction with staff and students using group video conferencing, we call it Google Meets. Uh, there's Google Hangouts, there's also Zoom if we need to be that, but our classes will be led by our district teachers. Now here's the critical piece, so that's our scenario one, remote learning that begins August the 10th. The decision to transition to onsite learning will be based on all the available information we can pick up from CDC, Health Department, and data so that we are still able to protect the safety of our students. That, all of that information will be presented to the governing board, and we will be moving forward with that depending on where we are at that time. We will not reopen when there's a significant challenge to the safety of our students. The second in scenario is onsite learning. Our plan right now, and I have to tell you, I'm not, I don't believe it'll happen. Our plan right now is that on August 17th, we will transition to campus learning where you'll be, uh, meeting your teachers. However, again, that depends on all that data about the infection rates and those things that we'll be looking at. If you want to remain home, you will continue to log into your classes virtually at that point, and then we'll begin to transition back to the on-the-site learning. Uh, with physical, physical distancing will be expected, and again, that's gonna be very difficult. All students will be wearing masks, uh, we will be requiring that, and we have facials for, uh, K-2 teachers and staff. Um, we'll have enhanced cleaning and safety protocols in place, and there will be the opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities and high school athletics. We're just not sure what that's gonna look like yet. AIA is still withholding, uh, a decision to move forward, and we'll be providing social and emotional support to students who are, uh, who, who not been in school for, since March. One of the other pieces that's in all this is a thing called the Sage and Sand Virtual Academy. This is an Arizona online program that we have applied for. And unfortunately, I'm sorry to say, we haven't received our approvals yet. That, uh, we were planning on opening August 10th, we may have to delay that until we get the Arizona State Board approval. I am told that that is expected to be August 21st. So what you may want to consider doing is enrolling your student in their virtual, uh, classrooms and then transition over to Sage and Sand, uh, virtually when it opens. Now, understand Sage and Sand is a new school to Page Unified. It's a new school. Uh, and it will be virtual. That means there will be no building to, to, to report to for instruction. You must have an internet connection in order to be a, uh, an applicant, a participant in Sage and Sand. Uh, meals will not be provided, because again, you're home, it's strictly a home environment. We will provide the Chromebooks and the iPads. Uh, there'll be K-2, 12 class meetings, small virtual groups of those kinds of things, social emotional support. And then all the learning accommodations and additional support that we provide in the regular school program, um, special education, IEPs, 504s, those will all be in place, uh, in the Sage and Sand. And Sage and Sand, students may participate in extracurricular activities. So now we have three scenarios. We have online virtual learning starting August the 10th. If all the information says it's safe, we could open school on August the 17th. Uh, and the board is considering that, and the third then is an option of Sage and Sand. Remember Sage and Sand is a separate school, so you have to transfer into that school, and that's why I say enroll in regular school right now, and as soon as it's ready, transfer. Um, someone said, well, is Sage and Sand like ASU Online? Uh, yes and no. Uh, we expect to be as good as, if not better than ASU Online or Primavera. We are starting up. This is a beginning. So just like anything new, we've got to get all of our, uh, processes in place and get our curriculum in place. At Sage and Sand, the students will be using what's called Edgenuity Courseware. And that is, um, in place, and it's a, an accepted system, it's aligned to the standards. So in the high school, for example, you'll have Courseware, which provides direct instruction, direct instruction videos, uh, interaction with tasks and assignments. There'll be formative and summative assessments. There'll be interactive learning tools like Readaloud, text translation, guided notes, and then a, a, a piece called My Path, which is a tutoring program. Middle school will be similar, Courseware, except middle school will have a program called UpSmart. That's where we, the, they're being assessed constantly on their standards, and then My Path, which provides intervention when it's needed. Um, K-5, we're still working on that one. Uh, again, it's, it could be an Edgenuity product, it's gonna, it's called uh, virtual curriculum, K-5, online courses, personalized. Path, PathBlazer is the name of the system. PathBlazer, it's got text-to-speech, audio and translation, uh, text and picture dictionaries, it monitors progress. Uh, though you, the teacher will be able to monitor the class, getting usage statistics, grading and Facebook tools, cumulative maps. Uh, I'm sorry, curriculum maps, communication tools, and so on and so forth. So remember, now we have three options. We have virtual academy, virtual learning starting August the 10th, possibly online learning August the 17th, and as soon as Sage and Sand is ready, you can launch that and have that available as a, uh, framework. Those are the three options. So again, as we move forward with this, we are very concerned about health and safety, and we put together safety measures that we are using to monitor and look at the low levels of spread allows for in-person learning. So when we see that low level spread and the number that I've been hearing is 5%, right now Arizona is at 25%. Uh, when we move down to 5%, then they're saying it's much more safer, much safer to, I slipped into my Kentucky accent there, sorry. It's much safer to do in-person learning. So there'll be social, physical distancing, uh, every place we can, intensive and frequent hand washing, hand washing stations in every classroom, daily health screenings, we've ordered those, uh, in, in, in flared thermometers, that we got two inches from our head to take temperatures, um, cleaning protocols in place. We, of course, will be limiting visitors to campus to minimize contact. Uh, we will minimize the sharing of materials down to hopefully none, and we'll have procedures uh, for exposure or positive testing. So those safety calls, protocols will be in place, they'll be carrying everything. So the difference though, that I want to again, with those three scenarios, is we're gonna provide a continuous learning, and that's why it's called a continuous learning plan, and in that continuous learning plan is our expectations. Uh, we will have learning aligned to the Beyond Textbook Scripting Framework, which we trained on last Friday with our administrators. It'll be delivered each day. All learning activities will be specific to that teacher as they pick it up. Beyond Frameworks gives us the what? The when, the how is what our teachers do. Uh, and it's packed, it's a proven model. The district has had that model since 13, 14, and this year we're gonna raise that and make that a guiding force in our classrooms. Attendance for 180-day calendar will be documented, and we have to report that to ADE for all the learning scenarios, whichever the one you choose. Students will meet the requirements for attendance, which means 10% absence ceiling, learning, and assessment. Google Classroom will be our learning management system 3 through 12. CSOL will be our learning management system K-2, and K-2 may also use Google Classroom, uh, depending, and there's, there's differences in the two, which involves how, uh, they interact with young kids. Um, professional development is underway on Google Classroom, so when we come back for August 4th, in, in that timeframe, we'll be doing that. Important, important, important. Communication with students and parents on achievement is through ParentView and StudentView for grades 1 through 12. This is our student information system, that you may have heard it called Power Schools. But all of you, every parent, mother, father, and even grandparents need to have access, have their son or daughter get them access to ParentView and StudentView. ParentView allows you to see students' grades in real time, see assignments as they're posted, and have communication with the teacher. StudentView also allows the student to see the same thing. So if you want to prepare your student for that independent learning, and we're gonna take ownership uh, for what I call learning with, with effort, they want to get into StudentView. I will also be using emails, phone calls, video conferencing, whatever we can use to support families. And as a result of meeting with, uh, one of my, uh, school teams last week, we're also doing some bulk mailings to get information out, to make sure everybody gets that information. There will be assessments, so we will expect students who are virtual, and that's gonna be everybody, whether you're in Sage and Sand or you're in virtual school at Desert View, Lakeview, middle school or high school, will be participating in daily assignments, in common informative assessments, and in unit exams, all the things that go with making class participation important. All of that will be part of the students' learning, and we'll document a grading book for ParentView and StudentView, so you'll be able to see what's happening. Uh, and we will be working with teachers to keep that current, and as the most immediately that we, you know, most current as we can. Uh, assessment of student learning will be recorded according to our policies or procedures. One thing, the government, the governor's executive order, again, we're going back to that executive order, requires that we assess all students K-12 to measure learning, and we're looking at learning loss from last March till now. Assessments in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics will be administered within the first six weeks of school after August 17. That executive order requires August 17th to be the first day of school, and then, and within six weeks, we have to make that assessment for students. We will be working on, and we are working on, social emotional learning and unique needs. We'll be finalizing the allocation of resources to put that together, um, and identifying all of our counselors, support staff. We're building a relationship within the community. Our board member, Candelaria, has, uh, pulled in some medical groups of the community, and we're building new relationships with them, so that we'll have not only school counselors and school social workers, but we'll also have access to begin to use mental, mental health therapists and those kinds of people if they're needed to respond to, uh, student needs. Technology, oh, gosh. What can I say? Technology is our biggest asset, and I am so impressed with the technology we have at Page Unified. It is awesome, but it's gotta go out. Technology is a two-way street. Uh, and we've got to bridge that connectivity gap, and parents, grandparents, you're gonna have to step up uh, and help with this, because we can't be everywhere. So we're gonna give iPads K-2. We're gonna give Chromebooks 312, and we're gonna be some, doing some videos to help orient you to what those look like. We're gonna have hotspots available for those who don't have internet access on their phones, but they still have to have access to a self-system in order for those hotspots to work. We have hotspots on our buses that we're working on to make those available. And then technology support for students and families during the day, there'll be a help desk available, which you could call if you're having difficulty with your Chromebook and that kind of stuff. So this is big. This can make or break virtual learning, obviously. If you can't get on, you can't learn. So in those Chromebooks, in those cases that the Chromebooks come in, there's also a flash drive, a thumb drive, which students can download, uh, directed information given by their teacher, take it home, play it on their Chromebook, play it on their iPad, and continue that learning that way. One of the things that's really, really important, and I say this all the time, you know, I learned a long time ago, a real quality computer lab teacher, first thing they do when the kids come in the computer lab, the first thing they do, wash their hands. Those Chromebooks are, can collect all kinds of stuff, so we're constantly gonna have to be disinfecting those Chromebooks. So please make sure that your students have lots of wipes to help do that, and we'll also have those at school to help with that, and the iPads. Those are collecting tools that we want to collect learning and not anything else. Uh, we're looking at potentially 300 hotspots, uh, from cell one. That will be funded by our CARES money, the federal CARES money that you've heard about on there. But our most important thing is we want to facilitate every way we can to keep kids connected and learning. Keep kids connected and learning. Now, in the regular school, the virtual learning school, there's time set, but in the, the Sage and Sand, uh, Virtual Academy, when that becomes, students can log in anytime they want to and participate in their courses. Uh, professional learning will be going on, and like I said, we have 14 teachers now off contract that we're paying to come in and develop virtual lessons, to develop scenarios, develop training to, uh, put that together. Uh, we'll have some alternative staff schedules, uh, virtual learning in Sage and Sand might be in the evening or the day, depends. Uh, we'll, very strict transportation guidelines, food service guidelines, and then we're waiting on extracurricular activities to come from the AIA. So we want to hear from you. Want to answer any, uh, email questions. So I have email questions I'm gonna go to and look at those. Uh, I didn't get any questions through this one. Oh, yes I did, sorry. Uh, can kids who opt to homeschool outside of PSD still participate in PSD school ports? I understand that is correct. Can they participate in orchestra or other elective courses? Uh, that may be a little more challenging, but we'll see how we can work that out. I believe that was allowed last year. If it was, we would continue to do that. Um, and I'm also just got a note from my technology guy that we're including a cleaning kit in those technology bags, so that we will be able to, uh, use those to keep kids safe. I'm gonna transition to, you can look at me, which you may not want to, uh, as I go through these questions, but I got several questions. I want to go through and answer that we're sent in, and thank you for sending that in. So remember again, we have three scenarios. We have virtual, which could open August the 10th, possibly onsite August 17th. And then we have Sage and Sand Virtual Schools. Uh, so those, those are the way and way we're doing that. And then those sand and sage courses will be, we'll be purchasing those from a company called Edgenuity. And again, that is, uh, Courseware and my Upstart, My Path, and so on and so forth. Um, I just got a flash from my, uh, technology director that says help desk will be available from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday to Friday, to help with any technology issues. So that will be really awesome. So let me switch over to the questions, and I'm gonna put my cheat sheet here in front of me to move forward with those questions, and we'll go till about 7 o'clock, and then we will, um, sign off and, and do this next Monday again, have more information. Remember, this is fluid, it changes daily. And remember, we're expecting another, uh, uh, executive order from the governor sometime this week about what's happening, because again, as you watch the news, the infection rates have changed dramatically. So the, one of the questions I have was remote learning. What will a typical remote learning day look like? Okay, I'm gonna pull over my trusty operations manual as we plan. So if you're at Lakeview, uh, the teacher's office hours will be from 8 to 9 o'clock, and then, uh, then they will begin synchronous learning at 9 o'clock. Uh, if you're at Desert View, it'll begin at 8. Uh, so Desert View, 8 to 8:15, class huddle. 8:15 to 8:45, reading. 8:45 to 9:15, math. 9:15 to 9:45, integrated learning. 9:45 to 10, a break, and then 10 to 10:30 specials. In that virtual environment, the one that's gonna start on August 10th, we said basically that learning is going to be available to students 8 to 12:30. Remember, you can't just sit in front of that computer for four and a half hours and expect to have a lot of sanity in some cases. So we are, uh, you're starting out that way, it'll, it'll grow and expand, uh, as we move along. Uh, middle school will start at 8. Again, we'll be, uh, learning begins period by period in Google Classroom. So there'll be an abbreviated So there'll be an abbreviated schedule, eight to eight thirty will be first hour, eight thirty-eight to nineteen, second hour, so on, and students would. Then just roll through their uh classes. Uh at the high school, it be uh soon, the learning will begin period by period. Remember, the high school's on four-period day. So on A day, it'll be eight to nine. Uh A day, second period will be nine oh eight to ten oh eight, so it'll be basically in one-hour blocks up till that twelve thirty. And then after twelve thirty, teachers will be available uh to consult in the afternoon. Uh along that same line. So that answers that question, how will specials, I E Ps, five oh fours and gifted be managed? Specials will be managed through the course of the regular school day. Um those have been scheduled at the elementary, as I said, uh ten, at Desert View, like ten to ten thirty is specials. Then the I E P five oh fours and gifted will all be managed as they would be in the regular school environment. The I E Ps will be implemented, the five oh four plans will be implemented. Uh gifted will be managed and put together uh through distance learning and we'll uh provide more details on that as we grow. Uh next question is, will classes such as music, C T P and lab time be offered? Uh yes, they will be. Lab time is going to be a little bit different um in that. If you've participated very much in uh online learning, you know that. Lab time could be go to your kitchen. Build a volcano and cause it to bubble out. And here's the steps that you go through and everybody's gonna be doing that. So the lab is gonna be under your supervision as while we're in virtual learning. Uh next question, if I enroll my student in a different virtual academy. Will P U S D recognize credits from that school if my student returns to P U S D school? Yes, we will, as long as that academy is um accredited by the North Central. Association or Advanced Dad, it's called. If it's a credited academy, yes, we accept those credits. Be careful though with credits when you're talking about credits. Credits are based on seat time, credits are usually awarded at a semester, not by quarters. So you want to watch that in and out, you know, if you want to transfer at the high school level, always plan your transfers around the semester. Be sure it's around the semester. Uh next question, a little bit about Sage and Sand Virtual Academy. Uh when do we expect the state board to approve that? I'm expecting that August twenty-first. And then we will, we're already building staff, we're already building, the curriculum's already built, so we're already building. Those implementation pieces. Now remember, because it's virtual. Uh it's remote and it'll be different, there's not a definite schedule. For Sage and Sand, let me pull back to my sheet and it uh. Sage is saying you log into your course when you're ready. Uh and you move forward that course based on performance, based on mastery of standards, it's not based on seat time. How will instruction in Sage and Sand differ from instruction for remote learning at a regular P U S D school? Uh it's not gonna be much different, the only thing is because we're purchasing that software right now, it'll be um. A lot of different level and so as we move forward, we will, we will get that way online. You know, like I said, when I started, I feel like a first-year teacher doing the town hall, I feel like a first-year teacher when I have to wo- work remotely. Uh and I'm sure our teachers are gonna, a- all of us are gonna come that way when we start out virtually. Some will be more technologically adept than others. And that always is the ones with the young, still have brown hair, not white hair. Uh as we go through that, but us old guys can learn how to do this too. What is the ratio of teachers to students at Sage and Sand? That ratio will be determined by course, so it will depend on how many uh uh teachers we assign to a course. Usually it'll be twenty-five, thirty, forty. And remember, uh because we're using Edge Annuity, there's also tutors behind Edge Annuity online that will be working with that. But most Sage and Sand open tentatively August tenth, but right now it's probably gonna get delayed till Sep- August twenty-first. What I suggest you do, in order to contain, maintain continuity, in order to get involved and get that. Learning going is enroll your students in a regular school and then transfer to Sage and Sand. It's easier to transfer to Sage and Sand than it is to transfer back to regular school. Once you enroll in Sage and Sand, you have to be there a semester. You have to be there a semester, again, because credit and standards are mastered in that semester basis. Uh when can I register my student Sage and Sand? You can submit your registration anytime. Uh we have registration starting. Excuse me, let me go to my cheat sheet again. We have registration starting. July, actually this week. July. One more time. Here we go, July twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-fourth is for new students, new to the district. So the new student link will be available on Power School starting July thirteenth. And uh then once you start that documentation, uh call the school. And they will set an appointment for you to come in and they'll help you get through that documentation. Uh and at that same time, if all that gets complete, uh the students could also pick up their. Chromebook or their iPad and that will depend on yeah, getting registered, nor to load into the Chromebook, you have to have. That ID number. Uh then July twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Is the returning stool, student link will be on and available for you. And now uh it says on my notes that I also start July, that returning student link is available now. So jump in there, get yourself registered, you'll be able to complete the returning student registration. And uh get your parent portal account set up. K three kindergarten, third grade, sixth grade and ninth grade. Will require proof of residency, residency, so you'll have to take that uh document in. So if you need help completing your online registration, uh or meeting with a schedule, call a school, set an appointment. All the meetings at school will be based on appointment only. Why? To reduce the uh the opportunity for too many people to be there at once, to maintain social distancing. Then another date to write down, write this date down, August three through five. Will be distributing iPads and Chromebooks uh across the board and. Seven thirty to nine, eleven to one and five to six thirty at all school sites. So Lakeview, for example, will be curtside pickup at B door. Desert View will be pickup at the front entrance and so on and so forth. More information will be coming out, it should actually be in the flyer that we just sent you about how to do that, but August three through five. While teachers are here, learning how to develop those fantastic lessons that we're gonna put forward for you uh in a virtual environment. You can come in and pick up your your Chromebooks and begin to use those Chromebooks to look at uh getting into the environment. The uh the Google Classroom. How is Sage and Sand different than remote learning at P U S D's regular schools? Remote learning in the regular school at Lakeview, Desert View, Middle School, High School is based on a schedule. As I said before, so um the high school will start at eight o'clock, middle school start at eight o'clock. Remote learning in Sand and Sage, you can log into that schedule anytime you choose to. How fast you complete those courses is only based on how much effort you intend to put into it. It's very effort-driven and it's available twenty-four seven, quite frankly, unless you need um a a a support with that. Brick and mortar of that August seventeenth date, if a student, teacher or staff member is found. To be ill with COVID nineteen, what actions will be taken to ensure the safety of other students, teachers and staff? In our continuous learning plan on page eighty-three, we have uh developed a uh. In the plan that works as a task force, we call it a crisis team, there'll be a crisis team at each site. Uh it could have um uh six members at a minimum and it'll be uh led by our nurse, Miss Saint Germain. And that will be the the group that will deal with uh any indications of a possible COVID nineteen exposure or. Uh some illnesses and they'll have touchless thermometers at each site. And then they'll, they'll have all the P P E they need, they'll take that student then that's identified as a possible. I don't know how to say politely, a possible uh carrier or a possible. Uh could be ill and they'll move them to an isolation room, uh which has been designed to be. Um as sanitized as possible, put a mask on that student, contact the parents. And begin to work with getting that student removed from campus. And move forward with that. Will students and teachers exposed to that student be quarantined? That's a possibility. Uh that'll be made on a case-by-case basis by the basis by the crisis team. They will look at the circumstances, you know, it could be like myself, I have allergies. So it could be a bad allergy day, I go in, I get taken to the isolation room. The nurse checks me out and says, yep, you got allergies and that's okay, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that, so I could go back to class. What precautions or guidelines will be taken by the school to keep our students safe? Mask wearing will be the number one requirement, uh especially three through twelve. Ham washing, uh there'll be ham washing stations throughout the school on campus. We will do everything we can to protect, to build social distancing, especially at the lunch time. Breakfast and lunchtime students will be eating in the classroom, so they're in a controlled environment and we can help protect that social distancing. What kind of school and classroom cleaning will occur? Basically, classrooms will be cleaned three times a day or more as needed. Uh and that's what we we've planned, we've purchased huge amounts of sanitizers. Um uh Georgie likes to tell me we have three-minute, five-minute, ten-minute sanitizers that we can take in and spray and the room is. Clean at that point, we have fogging machines that we can take in and clean a classroom and put that together. So we've got lots of uh possibilities. If we go brick and mortar on August seventeenth, um we'll also be bringing on additional custodial staff. To assist with maintaining that highly sanitized environment. What consequences will students or teachers face if they don't follow the safety guidelines? Uh we would ask you to con- if it's a student, we'd ask you to contact your parents, have them come and get you. We really need everybody to be safe and because you're not following the guidelines, you're putting all of us at risk. You're putting your friends at risk, you're putting your parents at risk, uh and the same thing with the teachers. Uh same thing, though, we'll be following the guidelines. Um I talked about that, uh plans for ru- lunch is again lunch in the classroom. High school will be lunch in the cafeteria, the first week, if not longer, we will be closed campus at the high school. So students will have lunch on campus, they'll pick up their lunch, they'll have uh socially-distanced seating arrangements. In the cafeteria and then we've got additional tables to have that outside as well. Outside would probably be the best place to enjoy a lunch. Um and pull that together, right now, we're not planning any assemblies uh and those kinds of things, recess. Will be uh at the elementary, will be structured so that students again are participating in the social distancing. And when you go outside, uh you know, we both have these large fields, you'll be able to spread out. Uh if the the teachers want to do recess. The last question I have, and I haven't received any more on my slides. The last question is, what is, why is communication we receive from the district only coming from the Facebook page? Right now, or as I said, our website is uh under construction and we anticipate being over with that. But we are also communicating through Messenger. So you're getting audio, you're probably still getting texts, we just started, um I got a bulk mailing permit. So we can get out paper, um we are doing phone calls, you can always call the school and get information. Um and we can send through Power Schools, we can send messages as well. And Power Schools will also document uh what's happening that way. So that's the questions I received at this point, I I believe that I covered a lot of ground. And I want, wanted to uh share that with you, one of the parents uh asked, and it was a very good question. How are you protecting my son or daughter when they go online from uh getting hacked? Getting into the wrong website? In order for those Chromebooks to work, the the students have to go enroll in our domain. So when I turn on my Chromebook and I log in, I'm logging into Page Unified's domain. And we have heavy federal regulations that require us to be what's called SIPA-compliant Children Internet Protection Act. And so we have a lot of pieces in place that will help maintain that. But also remember, that's just the Chromebook logging into the page domain. If you have other computers in the house, you're still wide open, that's one you want to look at as well. Gosh, that's a lot. Let me hit a couple of high points uh with that, August uh three through five is Chromebook iPad distribution. Um call your school and get more information on that. I'm gonna back up and say July twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine is returning students. That link is open now, so you can complete that registration process and get involved in in that as well. July twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, this week is also the new student link. And if you have been in, if you are a student who has been enrolled in Page. A year ago, two years ago, three years ago, you have, you would be a returning student. And that's important because if you try to enroll as a new student. It'll, it'll give you an error message and tell you that you need a um a code. Well, if you log in as a returning student, that code will be provided you through that's, that, that method. Um August tenth, virtual learning starts. Kids will be logging into their classrooms or Google classrooms and working with their teachers. August the seventeenth, depending on the board's decision, may be on the ground. Again, not likely based on all the stuff that we're seeing right now, but it could be. So those are some major dates. Just remember, you know, just like I talked about in the beginning. This is new to me, YouTube is new to me, uh yeah, I kind of look like, you know, I should know more about it. But and the same thing's happening to our teachers and that's why we're providing a huge amount of time for our teachers to prepare, prepare virtual lessons. From August, or I'm sorry, from March to May, our main way of dealing with students was through. Um paper packets. This is going virtual, we mil- we may still be using paper packets. But that would be for a few students who have difficulty with that connectivity. So we want to be sure that everybody is is able to get online and be a part of all this. I want to hit, just go back to my share screen just a minute. And. Click back to. Continuous learning expectations, I want to leave with this, that the learning is gonna be aligned to the state standards. Using the the Beyond Textbook Curriculum Framework, that will be delivered each day. All learning activities will be prepared by the teacher. Uh we have that attendance will be uh accountable for the students in relation to that. And we expect students in an online virtual environment and parents, we need your help. We need your help to coach kids because a lot of times the students have been involved in gaming and that kind of stuff, exciting, yelling, screaming and so on. Now we're going into a virtual environment where that teacher may be looking at twenty, twenty-five kids through that virtual environment, so. Be sure that we're looking at participation in daily assignments, uh the the common informative assessments. Um performances, exhibitions, class participation. I started my training this morning with our administrators as we're working through more and more details every day. With the question, how do you engage a kindergartner in virtual learning? And we talked about that and we looked at that and that will then translate back to our staff as we move forward. Uh also remember, get yourself involved in parent view. Make sure that you're able to log in and check your students' um academic performance and their academic progress. Gosh, that was a lot. Wow, I didn't know I could talk for forty-nine minutes. Appreciate all of you, please, next Monday, we'll be doing this again, we'll have new information. Please, next Monday, we'll be doing this again. We'll have new information. We'll still be hitting the highlights of the dates and stuff. And we're getting closer and closer to starting, so. We appreciate all your support. If you have questions, call, email, text, whatever you need to, to get that answered. We want you to feel as comfortable as you can in relation to our school. So we're starting again virtually. On August the tenth. And then we'll see where we go. Have a board meeting tomorrow night. We'll be talking about these kinds of things. We have a schedule, another board meeting next Tuesday again, because we're constantly monitoring. The, the daily situations and what that looks like. I wish you all the best. Have a great evening. Enjoy. Again, send questions and we'll be prepared to get you those answers. Thank you so much.